All right.
Zoom, yes.
Yes, Councilmember Springsteen and Councilmember. But both of her screens we could see.
Okay.
Or councilors, yeah, councilors. Okay, all right, so I'll go ahead and get this workshop called to order. And six P M. City of Lakewood, Colorado, City Manager's Cabinet Room. And Zoom as well. Quick note about. Council workshops and their unique meeting format, which the members of the city council work as a body to review information previously received from staff and the public. Receive limited new information, hold in-depth discussion, provide staff with policy direction on the identified topic. Members of the public are welcome to attend and observe either in person or via Zoom. Over council workshops do not provide for your action. Go ahead and go to the call board. Paul, here. Hers absence, Mayor Carrera.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Franks.
She can't, it looks like.
Here.
Thank you, Council. Strong.
Here.
Jansen. Charazai.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
And Abel.
Here.
Great. Thank you very much for taking the time this evening. This is come our way through the request for council action. And as a note, I know Counselor. Jansen is not going to be able to join us, I think, maybe potentially also. So Counselor Sheres, I brought this forward to discuss in its capacity, the ability to look at a censure provision in our policies and procedures. We have a code of conduct, we have a code of ethics, we have sexual harassment policy. And this is actually something that we used to have in the previous policies and procedures and was taken out. So Mr. Goldstein provided counsel with a packet of different copies from different cities of how they addressed this and what that looks like. And without further ado, I will turn it over to Counselor Sheres, I, she is the one that brought this forward. Yeah, request for this action.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So. What I wanted to possibly discuss is just bringing this back as an option for a tool that we can use. There has been some opportunities, I think, in my tenure here at City Council, like where we have every desire to keep moving and do the work that we need to do for the city, but we also have had some incidents on the council from the dais that a lot of us disagreed with. And so what I'd love to understand is, is this a tool that will help us to reinforce to the community when we find behavior of council members no out of line with our values while still having us move forward? I don't want to disrupt the work that we're doing. I want us to be able to keep getting work done. And so this feels like the easiest way for us to do that. As, you know, this isn't meant to silence folks, it's meant to be a public sentiment by council as a body to share that there's been disagreement with actions and behaviors of council members. And what I hope we can discuss tonight is just creating a high bar. I know that we, we all can agree that we don't want this to be misused as a tool. And so how do we all feel that we can set the guardrails so that people aren't, you know, misusing this as an opportunity? I think Councilor Abel shared in our last discussion about this that it's been eighteen years since anyone in the city of Lakewood has experienced any sort of censure. And so why I don't hope that we ever use this, what I do think is helpful is for us to at least have some sort of response when things are going off the trail here. So that's really what I wanted to, for us to discuss. I think, I really want to, I think, Mr. Goldstein as well. You know, what you shared with the examples, our neighbors do this. This is not like out of the norm of what is reasonable. And so we're not craving, you know, trailing ahead in new paths. We're doing something that, you know, was pretty consistent across the front range. And so I'm just asking for us to reestablish that. I also think it's tough, we have a basically new council with all of our tenured members potentially rolling off in this next election cycle. And so it's challenging for us to absorb rules and regulations that were created by former council members. And so I'd love for us to just open up that discussion.
So I ask for clarification. Sure. You say this is happening all across the country. We have four examples, one of them being ten. For where would the rest?
I think it's more than four, five. Six, so there's at least six. My point is that it's not out of the norm. Wouldn't it be the only one in the front range? I guess that's the point of this meeting.
And if you look at the definition of censure in, censure in my dictionary, they all relate to a point of the body and have to do with the ability to, for instance, synonyms include criticize, refer, and condemn to announce something that you see in most bodies of governance, in fact, was part of ours for a long time. And so the idea is, I think it was general consensus to have this because council wanted to move forward on what a policy would look like, what that bar would look like if that happened, and how I think we heard in the general discussion, you want to hire bar. People have talked about super majorities type of action that would be needed. And what would that criteria be and what would that form look like, right? There's also, you know, there was a comment on Lakewood Speaks about, you know, just go talk to that person. Some of these cases, we have had those conversations prior, prior to any sort of public conversation. Unfortunately, there's not an ability with one of our council members to have that because and those sorts of things where any kind of conversation needs to take place in the public. Sexual harassment policy, there's a whole backside, a private side that if sexual harassment and harassment, any of that happens, it doesn't go public first, there's a process, a follow-up, an investigation. So those are kind of, I think, some of the things that we want to look at. Counselor Springsteen, we see your, your note, I think it's backwards.
Yeah.
FYI, so heads up. So I guess that's where kind of we're at. If you've had time to review some.
Well, what does it say, Mayor?
It says ACLU. No.
So Counselor Springsteen, censure has nothing to do with taking away freedom of speech. Like I just said, other bodies for this, and that's the con, we're not going to have a fight about.
Let's talk about Zoe Zephyr in Montana.
Amen. So.
I guess I just don't understand the comparison now. Because this is, you know, I think what we're talking about is like slander versus criticism. Honestly, to be quite frank, I wasn't thinking of Counselor Springsteen when I originally put this up. I was thinking about some of the behavior of Counselor Over and the response we had from community members who are asking for him to be censured. So I understand that there is a member of council who's taken this to believe that this is a direct attack on them, but that was not my intention. And I don't think it's fair for us to be comparing the unfortunate actions that are taking place in the legislature in Montana to what's happening here.
I think exactly on point, the ACLU sued the state of Montana today over trans state rep Zoe Zephyr because she was censured
for her behavior.
For no good reason, she was discriminated against. And that is what this is about, discrimination, discrimination, discrimination.
For she's being discriminated against for a difference in opinion, that's absolutely against what I believe is what we're trying to propose here. This isn't a punishment for people who have a different opinion than members of council. It's a.
That's exactly what it's about, Counselor Sheres, I, exactly.
We're not going to make those accusations, Counselor Springsteen, we're having a productive conversation, we're not going to be.
Are we?
That's what this goal is, if you can't participate in that.
You're going to silence me, right? You're going to censure me, right? You're going to discriminate against me because I'm a woman of color who you don't like to speak. You don't like me talking back to you, Mayor. That's what this is about.
This is actually nothing about that.
So thank you, the person that brought this forward, in case you heard, said this is nothing.
Well, she doesn't get to talk the whole time just because she brought a stupid thing forward.
Can I ask a point of clarification, Counselor Springsteen? Um, I think, like, to me, I look at what's happening in these other states as a really good floor, that like if we are talking about censure, it is important to bring those things into the room.
Do you agree with Tennessee kicking two black members legislature because they're black? Do you agree with that?
Why, why would you think I agree with that, Counselor Springsteen?
Because why are we sitting here right now?
So my point is that there are some rules with censure that work better than others and that those that you have brought into the room are very important to think about because there are ways for us to create a system where we are able to uphold the level of.
Discriminate.
Reducing people's ability to actually like vote on things.
Silence.
And do the job that they need to do. And so I, I do really believe that those examples are important considerations as we think about how to build a good censure policy that wouldn't allow that kind of abuse of power.
Why are we doing this on the very same day that the ACLU sues the state of Montana for this very same sort of process that we're going under right now? This can be used against anybody at any time.
Well, there's nothing really specific proposed yet. Yeah, why don't we get into the discussion on putting the guardrails in before we just.
The guardrails, this was taken off the agenda by Counselor Franks. Uh, Counselor Abel, Count, uh, Counselor, um.
Benson.
Sorry. There was one other counselor who was involved in taking this out of our of our policies and procedures a few years ago. I want to know, why is it back? Why are we wanting to silence and discriminate after this city went on to the website of the Colorado Freedom of Information Coalition? Tell me what this is about on the very same day the ACLU.
So Counselor, we don't schedule these based upon procedures that are filed in courts. This was scheduled weeks ago. Do you remember this was done via a request for council action where the entire body, or at least the majority of the body, said we would like to go forth and have this meeting tonight? As you.
You don't like people talking back to you, especially women.
Counselor, you are, okay, Counselor Franks, go ahead. Counselor Franks.
Thank you. Well, apologies, I could not be there in person tonight. My, with, with my job schedule, I, I only get off at six P M. So, but I did want to weigh in because I was one of the counselors who, when we were revising the council's policies and procedures, was on the side of sort of pulling this out of the policies and procedures, mainly because I didn't see it being maybe an effective way to deal with those types of situations. I will say that I've been under a lot of pressure from my community about the, sort of the flow of the council meetings. Certainly, I think Ward Four is always very open to hearing a multitude of points. They have a very disparate set of opinions that I always like to bring forward in a variety of ways. I think where many of my constituents are coming from is that the conversation has become maybe personal, it's become less constructive, it's become less about good quality debate of ideas, and it's become more where folks maybe are being silenced through attacks. And so I'm here to listen about ways in which I can maybe contribute to instantiating guardrails which will protect from those differences of opinion, which I think are absolutely vital to making good policy. We, we need differences of ideas in order to kind of test the bounds of legislation. But where I think we, we are maybe looking to adopt this potential policy going forward and re-instantiating it is to really get the productivity up, to take the personal attacks out, to take that divisiveness out and really allow council to be a very, you know, productive body and hear all those ideas. And so I'm just getting a lot of input from my constituents and wanted to weigh in on that. That's why I was in support of us at least having this conversation. But I'm certainly very interested in hearing about how we would make sure that we weren't silencing voices because I do not support that certainly. Again, very open to hearing about some of the ways we could take this forward and will be participating through the night.
Thank you. Thank you. I agree about the guardrails. There is nothing that I can see in any of these other cities' legislation, our past legislation, or even the state's suggestions for statutory towns that would address what your concern is about Mr. Over, word of choice of words. I have here, if you will bear with me, the former causes for censure from our Policies and Procedures manual, not in two thousand and ten, but two thousand and eighteen, when we removed it. They include, oh, and in fact, it's really not complete because there's a point in here which it says, council may do this under Article two oh five. You look under two oh five, there are no conditions there. Uh, it's mine. So we need to first find out what that is, that comes from the charter. Secondly, we list the reasons from the former censure that was removed unanimously by both the city council, all the city councils. But it says physical or mental disability rendering the council member unable to perform council duties. I may be the only one that will tell that. Absences from regular city council meetings or study sessions with such absences equal thirty percent of all regular city council meetings and studies. Kind of calendar year. For a council member, lack of residence in the ward from which they were elected and for the mayor, lack of residence within the city, knowing disclosure of confidential information. Confidential information means information which is not available to the general public under applicable laws, ordinances, and regulations and which is obtained by reason of the council member's position with the city. Item E, a conviction of a violation of the Constitution or Colorado statutes, which conviction, but given serving as a council member. And then H picks up the procedure that's to be used. So those were our previous conditions, censure. And the super majority is called for, but we're only one other way of the super majority anyway. I comment on the folks in Montana and Tennessee, is they're fairly nineteen, eighteen, I'm sorry, twentieth century folks, anyway, no offense. And what goes around comes around. So I'm not sure that your reason for bringing this forward has anything to do with any of the procedures or problem. It is I understand that there are a lot of community members who were offended about that. About the comments you referred to. But how do we, what guardrail do we put in place that would prevent that?
It was fun.
Sure. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand why we would have to use that definition that you're defining here for implementation again. But I, I, I'm not asking us to scaffold off of previous policy. I'm asking for us to consider bringing this back as a tool and let's refill the scratch on, on things that we can all agree on. And there's some cases that are in our recent history that we would maybe want to build the floor and ceilings around. So I do think Mr. Over acted egregiously. I think that he heard from his constituents, and I do think that that was, you know, just a reminder, censure doesn't take your voice away, he still could do all the things he wants to do as a city council member. It would have been an opportunity for us as a council, as a body, reminder, we don't have power as one, we have power as a body. So again, another guardrail, not being misused, to share that we didn't, you know, share that value that he put in that language. And the fact that he kept doubling down and some of the behavior that he had sensed then, I think, it caused her concern, a point for us to pause and maybe think about how we can implement this. I don't know that we would ever in fact be able to pull this lever, but it's reasonable to ask for us to bring this back.
Are you talking about the power to remove somebody from office?
I'm not talking about that at all. I'm talking about.
Censure can involve removal from office.
We can only remove.
Check this based on our charter. Check, then, well, the charter refers how the charter says. Removal from office, council shall have the power to remove its members from office, including the mayor where cause has provided an ordinance hereafter adopted. Removal from office shall require a vote of not less than three fourths of all members of council. Under this, you could make that a condition of censure. Denver has that as a condition of censure. So I'm afraid to get too much into detail because I believe the topic of the night is censure, whether it should be restored or whether it should not. But I'm not sure how much of to what details we can get into of your object for wanting censure. What is the, what do you see as the sanction?
The behavior that would cause for censure, is that you're asking?
No, the punishment, the sanction, or.
I think it's a public statement by the body. It's to some level performative, but I think it's a balance of showcasing to the community that we disagree with this behavior while keeping moving. I'm not asking us to remove people from office, but many of these examples are showcasing censure and only that it's a public act by the body saying that they disagree with the behavior, actions, language of one member of council. That's all I'm asking.
May I have a spot? Without specific guardrails, you can't do that.
Well, that's what.
We haven't gotten it because I've been accused of being stupid so far, so.
There are issues you have to address. I'm just. So we don't, if we don't put something, some actual watermarks in place, this could be abused by a later council to say, oh, no.
That's what your conversation is meant to do. So if you had some ideas, if there were some examples that you saw, I think it would be great to understand that. I one hundred percent agree about the super majority, super majority plus one, whatever we want to do to make sure that it's being misused.
You're fixing to be in a super majority with one more seat that pops up in the next election. However, I bring up these reasons because they're pretty solid. If there's no sanction today, there could be one tomorrow. So I, I just think we need to narrow the narrow the lanes on this so that we're not bringing some woman up for censure because they have abused another council person or accused another council person of doing something that they didn't do or, or just disagreeing with the general benefit of the person's taking on, you know, issues large and small. It should, there's just too many ways to use censure as a political tool. As I said, what goes around comes around. We need to protect the folks like Zoe and like the gentleman from Tennessee. Make sure that will never happen in life.
Well, I think we're all in agreement, I think that's where we started that evening. Getting this to where we're at tonight. So I, we're back to Sharon, Wendy, then I'll go back. I'll go back to Bart.
Yeah, so I, I agree, I, I think in my mind, if we brought the idea of censure back, I would want it to be more of a public review. I mean, that's essentially all that it is in Congress. It doesn't, like, it doesn't have a lot of teeth, but it is a way to at least say this wasn't okay in the body as a whole agrees with that. I do agree that we need guardrails to make sure. I don't think that being censured should then necessarily be an opportunity to move forward with, like Counselor Abel was saying, removing someone from office. I think very clear, this is what censure is and this is what it is not. And, you know, it is not a step towards removal from office or anything like that. It's just the body publicly standing up, you know, and letting the community know that this is not, you know, this is not okay. Um, and we do need guardrails to, Sophia and Anita's point, you know, we've got examples in other states right now where these types of things are being used, um, you know, really incredibly or really dispenes people or remove them from office. I would not be comfortable with, you know, adding specific behaviors of someone as the cause for removal from office because that does become arbitrary and political. And that's, and I don't think that's what we're talking today. So I just want to clarify, I think, you know, the broad consensus that I'm hearing is we need an opportunity to, you know, publicly stand up if we need to and, you know, say that it's not okay to, you know, make sexist misogynistic comments towards your coworkers and double down on that publicly. So.
Sharon, Wendy, and Bart.
Yeah, just, just some of the same thing, and I don't need to repeat what everybody, everybody else has said. I was part of the updated policies and procedures. And I'll admit, when I looked at it, I thought, why do we even have it? What's it doing? You know, it's not doing much of anything. But then I've gotten pushback on my, from my community too, essentially saying, why don't you guys, excuse that expression, but that's what they say. Why don't you do anything? Why don't you say anything? Why are you just sitting there and listening to whomever it is? I mean, one council member now who thinks it's about her, but there's been many examples. And we can't, we have nothing really that we, we can do except to talk individually to these people. So, you know, I was at fault probably for agreeing to remove it to begin with, but I'm more than more than open to looking at bringing it back again and having a discussion around that.
Wendy, and then Bart.
Well, for when I appreciate the clarification on what in fact it could be because reading in preparation for tonight, it seems like there are different kinds of censures, and even this document from our procedures talks about removal or censure, but it didn't really say. And even this document from our procedures talks about removal or censure, but it didn't really say which one. Each of these was for. Censure that has communities that's attached to it is different than like a collective voice. So I appreciate hearing this, what you were looking at as we're having this conversation tonight. But I, I do want to assert that, and I think a few of us have said this, we don't want to urge the First Amendment problem. It's bikini now, thank you for sending me the information that you did about that, wasn't a study, I'm sorry, judgment, the article that talked about that. I think it's crucial that we make sure that we're protecting the voices of the community as we're doing this. So, thank you.
Also Frank.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Paul. I did want to just reiterate a few things from earlier, just to make sure it's really clear to the public that may be watching our workshop here. Um, any consideration, I've not heard a single person say it's about anything that would be involved with discrimination. It's not involved with silencing. It doesn't take your voice away. It doesn't, you know, uh, doesn't silence you. Um, it, I like Counselor Astrum's words, a collective voice. Um, again, my community originally, when this was removed, um, was like, well, what's the purpose of it? We as voters will make that determination the next time the voting cycle comes around. So they were very much in support of that. But I think watching council over the last few years, they have reached out repeatedly and more frequently as of late saying. Why are you just sitting there? Why aren't you saying something? And I tried to explain, we act as a body. It's not my job to police anyone else's behavior. I may find something offensive. I may say something that others find offensive. They can reach out to me, but they really started pressing me for what can you do to put this on, on, on the public's radar that, that you collectively agree? So I would be interested in certainly super majority. I think that's important because you do not want it to just be a simple majority. Um, I'm not sure that you can sort of legislate out easily the different types of, of, of things that could come up. But I do think the public is starting to demand more civility. They want robust debate. They want us to fight for them and fight for the things that matter to them. But they certainly are telling me that they want to do it civilly. They want us to do it in a way in which their children can watch our meetings and be educated on the kind of the, how democracy works. And not be worried about that they're going to, to, to subject their children to, to more, um, what I would call just behavior that they really are not trying to model inside, inside their families. So I like what I've heard that folks are very much in tune with the fact that this would not be punitive. It would be a collective public statement and it would be nothing in removal from office. That's very clear. That's in the charter. We would need to go to a vote of the people if the people wanted to expand anything that would require a removal from office, in my view. Um, so again, just wanted to reiterate some of those points. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Springsteen.
Well, first of all, I don't think this is in line with the charter. I do not think the charter allows for this. I do not think we can do this without a vote of the people. Secondly, it's very easy for you all to sit there and say. Um, this is not discriminatory. If you are not a person of color, if you are not. Um, one of the people who is singled out simply for being different on this council, who has been singled out for four years. Because see, Latinas are supposed to just sit back and shut up. And we don't like it if they don't do that. And that is what this is about. Let's, let's not mince words, Counselor Franks. That is what this is about. Now, I have put up some things. Kavanaugh, Kavanaugh in Nebraska. A state legislator there. First Amendment. First Amendment. Freedom of speech. It is the hallmark of our democracy. Discrimination. That's what silencing people is about. And guess what? Sometimes it turns on you. And you get discriminated against if you don't have the majority. This is great when you all think you have some kind of weird mean girls majority. But guess what? Down the road, this is going to affect our city and the people of color in our city who want to have a voice. Justin Jones, Tennessee, got booted out of the state legislature, as did his counterpart, Mr. Pearson. Just in the last couple of weeks. Why? Because they were speaking out about. Violence in their state. Zoe in Montana, who the ACLU just took up her case and sued the state today. A trans woman. They said she violated decorum. Because she spoke up for her people. Her people. She represented her constituents and that's what we're all here for. Representing our constituents. Why are we wasting our time with this? We should be representing our constituents on important city matters right now. Not throwing stones at each other. You don't even know what side of the aisle we're on, right? It shouldn't matter in local government. You all, you all throw stones at people who were lifelong Democrats. Or lifelong Republicans. It doesn't make any sense. It's, it's throwing stones in a moment. This is a waste of time. This is a weapon to be used to silence people. This is a weapon to be used to discriminate. And I will tell you one thing. The ACLU will be here in Lakewood. If you all continue this path of discrimination.
So, sounds like we have somewhat of a consensus around, if we were to go for the super majority.
Consensus means everybody agrees, Mayor.
No, it doesn't. It means a majority agrees.
Oh, really? Sharon, are you mayor now or what?
So, okay. And I think we've heard loudly there that we want to make sure that this is a non-removal type action. Right? So to clarify that this is not about somebody's opinion or speech or things along those lines. So super majority, non-removals. And back to the kind of what Barb said, Counselor Franks said about.
Why weren't we on the Colorado Freedom of Information Coalition blog, um, a couple of months ago then, Mayor? If it's not about speech.
We, 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 we understand your position. You don't, you don't like it. You don't think we should go forward. That's not the position of.
This is not consensus to just say it's consensus is my point. You can't just say it's consensus.
So counsel, so our process is how we got here tonight was there was consensus by the body to come here tonight. Do you agree with that?
No.
Okay. Well, if we can't agree on the facts of the process, we're probably not going to agree.
How about the city charter?
Okay. So this is not.
No, that's the law. Somebody speak on the law, the city charter.
So, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure that it made it into the list of things that we were looking at. Like I feel like we're missing a couple of things that were on my mind that's kind of in front of the space.
Sure.
Don't let it.
No, no.
Um, I, I wanted us to just consider, you know, um, one of the things that I don't really see here, but you see in like other types of decorum type, you know, policies is thinking about the illicit protected classes. Either on, under the Colorado Constitution or the federal constitution. Uh, and that that is like one of the possible ways to think about the difference between, um, like harassment and freedom of speech. Like it's not the only way, but I just wanted to bring that possibility into that constitutionality also something that has been coming up that will create a honest discussion, so.
Zoe.
Would that be, um, to, to what you're saying, that would be like not allowed based upon state.
Like, like that one of the reasons why you'd be harassed and based on a protected class.
So like race, age, natural origin, color, creed, sexual orientation, disability. So it's a state of law.
Right. And I don't know if that's like necessarily the exact right way to go, if that feels like narrow enough for people or not. But maybe it just has like a starting point. Piece of discussion. Or something.
I believe that's covered under our harassment policy.
Right, but our harassment policy is like private, right? So that's like a different, it's just like a different code, right? So the idea is that we could think about, are the reasons like, um, to censor somebody, maybe some of the last ones like stopping the rest of them or what have you. But those are all about why we need to remove somebody, which is not always talking about. So in terms of really thinking about what's that line between protected speech and not protected speech, right? Which I think is one of the things that we're all anxious about on this. Like I know that that makes me anxious, um, very into freedom of speech. So now I know it's something that is addressed in higher levels of government. So that might be a place to start. That's all I.
The difference here is who has the majority. That's the only difference.
Counselor Springsteen, Charlie is the floor right now.
We need to be very careful that we protect free speech and we protect the ability of all of us to offer our opinions. And I don't want to vote for this in any way, shape or form, but it would be less distasteful if there were some guarantees in there. But how do you structure it so that? So that issues of free speech are protected? And that folks just can't have, literally say, well, I didn't like that, so. Let's censure this far. And we had. Folks coming for censure of one of the members. There were four last from this one even in the, uh, around the possibility. Words were censure that long. So.
There, can I add one?
That was recent, last couple of years.
Yeah.
And I think that there's a. You know, it's tough when you're a body and you try to self-regulate your, the body of, right? I mean, there's a difference between the representation of the people and also the. The balance of the body, right? Which is why you do Robert's rules of order, why you try to have those abilities and why these things aren't uncommon. And of course, we're seeing cases that are certainly troublesome to, to many, uh, I would say to a person, probably anybody in this room. But yet at the same time too, there's also things that have really bothered the public that just go by the wayside. So it's kind of trying to strike that balance moving forward. Um. Spiky Brown, I'm. Is Robert's rule that they're, are they quiet on censure or? I don't.
Yes, the United States Supreme Court, as you all know, reviewed this issue two years ago, exactly two years ago. It was interesting how much the conversation is exactly the two sides that presented in front of the United States Supreme Court. United States Supreme Court is the one that said that an act of censure is an act of protecting the First Amendment rights of the body to make a statement in response to an individual member. So it's actually protecting the First Amendment rights. The United States Supreme Court is the one who said that censure is an act of parliamentary procedure. And the United States Supreme Court has stated that you don't need a policy to censure. So the idea that you're creating a policy means that this body understands they have that power, but they are limited, limited in some way or getting it guardrails. The things that have been discussed with, that are happening in other states, removing people, the United States Supreme Court has been very clear, removal of someone from office is a very different action than the censor. Um, the, the actions of telling people they're not allowed to come to meetings anymore, very different action than censure. Censure is basically the majority saying, our First Amendment. Freedom of speech says that we think X should not happen anymore. Um, but it doesn't shut down anyone. Anyway, if anybody wants to read these, this recent case that the United States Supreme Court, they really did a great job of covering all of these topics.
So what they're saying is if we, if we censor as a censure, as a body, we're protecting collectively our First Amendment rights. Is that what I was?
Exactly what the United States Supreme Court said.
Okay.
That one member of the body cannot use their First Amendment rights to limit the First Amendment rights of the body as a whole. That was the decision in the 2021 case.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Springsteen, your hands up.
Well, I want to say that is not what that case says. That is a vast simplification of that case. And it does not address the, the horrific situations of discrimination going on across the country right now. Like right now in three different states, they have been in the news. And. I mean, I would love to hear what the city attorney has to say about this city opening itself up to a potential lawsuit from the ACLU. Just like the state of Montana is undergoing right now for the exact same situations that we face on council. Why can't we just all speak our mind? Why do we feel the need to be here today? As a majority vote to try to silence people whose voices we don't like. And guess what? When you are a person of color, you have to talk twice as loud to get to where I am today. You don't understand that at all. You think I'm being obnoxious? I am trying to be heard because everybody tells me to go in the corner and be quiet. I am a Latina. I should be quiet and demure. And you all are here tonight trying to say that I should shut up. This is discrimination. The ACLU will be in Lakewood soon.
Just for the record, again, to reiterate why we're here and that's to certainly not silence anybody. And I would just say, and it's got to be frustrating for.
You're the person who, who, who mutes me all the time. We were on the CFOIC because you mute members of council?
Not, yes, and, and what did I say in that?
No, your voice is not bigger than any one of ours. I am sorry, but it is not, especially not on this issue.
Decorum in these meetings, that's why that happened.
Decorum is not silencing members of council, Mayor.
There are other women of color on this council, and I want to be respectful of everybody on this body, please. So thank you.
What, oh, really? Who are they, Mayor? Okay, for the last year, yes. But what about the years before that?
Counselor? Please. So.
Discrimination.
Okay, your point has been noted and heard and recorded. Thank you. So we kind of have four or five different things that I think keep coming back. But I guess the, the main piece that is still missing is, uh, what does a. That I think keep coming back, but I guess the the main piece that is still missing is what does that? What what are the grounds? It sounds like with the Supreme Court, there doesn't need to be, but that we want to have something that is more.
Tonight.
So I was looking through different. One that kind of stood out to me was strong criticism, excuse me, strong criticism of disapproval. When it is the official judgments in the organization. And I think that's kind of what we're looking at here.
Did you find that as refined in one of the definitions? Probably a dictionary.
It did. I didn't just make it up. Yeah, that's why I said I found that. And I thought that's kind of what we were talking about. So maybe we just don't like studying. Because that's what we're talking about, right? It's a facial disapproval.
Could we also, there were, one of the examples, and I don't remember which one, but this is a public discussion too. So like. This isn't an executive session. This should be something where the public can participate as well. We don't want this to feel like this is behind closed doors and a secret. I think this should be something where the public is participating in.
If that's true, why wasn't it a study session where the public could weigh in?
There's two members of the public here right now.
Yeah, but they can't speak. At a workshop.
We actually have some online. We have some online and we had public comments open three, three weighed in on like speaks, but again, we have three formats of meetings, workshops, study sessions, and this opportunity.
Yeah, and this was a workshop to keep the public out of the discussion.
I guess I also feel like why I brought this up is because I feel like I need a level of protection. I think you've exemplified that tonight. You've attacked me a number of times in this conversation and frankly, just. Feeling like there has to be some tools that we can use to ensure that we're keeping each other safe. You were talking often about how you feel like.
I have attacked you? How?
You talk endlessly about how you feel like people don't come to your defense, but yet you are the first to attack everyone. I just feel like.
I never said that tonight. How have I attacked you? You need protection. From First Amendment speech?
We're talking about the decorum of how we operate as a body, as representatives to this community.
I would like for clarification for everybody in this room and online. Can you clarify exactly when we have a workshop and why we would instead have a study session?
So the workshop is for more informal items that in sometimes, in some cases are council specific. Right? Something such as our code of conduct. We did this in in these types of sessions. We did our whole. What's this called?
Policies.
Procedures. We did our harassment policy. Those are the types of things where it's much more informal. You have this opportunity for better interaction. Now, things were to go forward. Then you have a whole nother piece of the public input through. I don't know if this goes resolution or ordinance, I'm not sure, but we have that opportunity.
I would, and another option would be to send this now to a study session. So that it is downstairs. It's it's an opportunity for, it's a little more formalized in terms of what the it is that comes out of this. Today, as you saw, staff just gave you examples because we didn't really know what what where you want to go. So you don't have any. Persuasive kind of information, just what everybody else does. So from this meeting, we're listening and taking notes to hear. What do you want this to look like? And then we'll put it together, certainly legal, and bring it to you. And I'm recommending that this come in front of council in the form of a study session. So that there's plenty of time for public conversation as well. So I I guess I would describe a workshop as it isn't very polished and it's just kind of a real grassroots beginning of a conversation. We did it really successfully several years ago on the North Drive old. And the whole idea with that was. There were so many big posters of the different parts of the city. It like it let people go right up to each of them and let them ask questions. It's it's a more informal. Setting and then we go to study session when we have a little more formal information.
Thank you for making that for the attorney. I just want to make sure that this is coming out in a way that, you know, we are trying to protect everybody's. Ability to speak, and I know we won't always agree on what that's going to look like, but I want to make it really fundamentally clear to everybody that this isn't something that anyone was. Conspiring to do behind closed doors. We're having, we're starting our conversation that is going to be in multiple conversations before anything is said and done. And.
Strom, how did this come about then? If it wasn't conspiring behind closed doors, how did this come about?
So Kelsey Springsteen, for the third time, and I believe you were at the meeting.
Candidate Strom. Please speak to the discrimination.
So just for the record, and I think, were you at the meeting? I believe you were. When there was a request for council action submitted via our policies and procedures. That.
There was no consensus.
So there absolutely was consensus.
No consensus means everyone agrees.
So there was consensus under general business to bring us to where we are tonight. If you would like to go back and watch the general business segment. And I think potentially you did weigh in on that as well, as well as Counselor Oliver, who's not here and had consensus to move it forward. So that's why we're here again.
I'd like to hear from our candidates. And what they feel about this. Counselor Strom, Counselor Stewart.
City time to have candidates talk. That's not something we are allowed to do. And too, this is a body of people that are all elected. Regardless of what they're doing. So if we need to go to the study. So if we need to. Kind of move this discussion along in a way, I mean, I'm still a little bit hung up on what that was. I think we know the majority, the non-removal, certainly because. This has to do with us. I really want to be sensitive to staff and I thank you for just giving us information that's out there. And so, you know, I don't know if there's another body that we could talk to that deals with this or another recommendation. That could help us get to that one.
Before we get into it, let's don't call it a study session. It may need a series of study sessions.
Or another workshop.
Are we looking for a definition of what what is it that you want to move this forward? Nobody like my dictionary.
No, yeah, thank you. I just, I know, I know in this situation, this isn't something that's as easy to say, hey, staff, go figure this out. Because then they'll be in the worst position. So we need to figure out what. You know, the the idea of maintaining free speech, making sure it's not something that's discriminating on the basis of race, age, national origin, color, creed, religion, sex, sexual orientation. Supermajority, non-removal type policy, but what is that that says this falls under the need to bring up? A resolution on censure. What is that?
I think it's hard to define. And I don't think any of those examples gave, and I think that that's then why we need the supermajority or other configurations, because I don't think we can. I mean, clearly, we have all kinds of examples all over the board. Here in our city and across the nation, like we, I don't think it's easy for us to define what all of those could be. So it has to be like a spirit of whatever. It's sort of my consideration based on what I saw just from the six examples that we received across the front range. There was never a clear definition of what was. Necessitated the act of censure. There was one or two that talked about codes of conduct. Right. And I think that's clearly defined. Like, could we not just add this as a. An opportunity to respond from things that have gone wrong in the code of conduct? Because there are, you know, definitions over that we see every day.
I don't think we can discuss the code of conduct in any way. The only thing that was on the agenda was.
Right, same.
I think she was asking, could we use a violation of the code of conduct as written? As the grounds for discussion of censure. That's already been defined. We've all agreed to it. Could we just use that as the? The bar, yeah, for which to discuss.
That's what I meant, yes.
Counselor Frams.
Thanks, mayor. I think the only thing that I would add, it sounds like we are at least moving towards a study session. Would be that when we put that information up and solicit feedback from the public and make sure they know that they can speak, that we include the Supreme Court case and any of the maybe legal analysis that's been done on that. I think it would be important for the public to kind of understand maybe that that we're looking to potentially add some additional language, but it's it sounded like to me, if I heard correctly, it's already a power that's conferred upon us for our 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 First Amendment rights as a body. And so I just want to make sure the public gets the chance to read it maybe for themselves and any summary judgment, any summary information, not any summary judgment, any summary information that would help the public educate themselves. Like I said, I think that, you know. The public is also wanting to make sure that that the decorum improves in order for them to feel comfortable coming themselves and speaking before council. So I'm looking to advance anything that's going to achieve. A good, robust dialogue. And so I want to make sure the public feels real informed about the topic.
Yeah, so. And I don't think it's a bad place to start, although the code of conduct is pretty broad, right? And if you just add anything in our, you know, policy six point one code of conduct, there's a lot that. You know, is kind of just good governance that you wouldn't if you violated one path or century. There's just some examples that that would make.
The harassment piece, I thought some of those definitions. We're in policy and procedure manual, but there's a harassment component.
Okay, the harassment would be different because if you just did code of conduct, it would be. Avoid speeches in repetition, focus on issues, not personality. Well, you know, there could be some of that there. But I mean, that's pretty. Think critically and ask probative and unleading questions. That's not going to be something that's. In my opinion. Adjust others respectfully and get proper regard in the picking of others. Building up something like that, that's really more of a confession. So when you go to. Harassment.
Code of conduct is aspiration.
So.
Six point two then.
So six point two. What?
I don't. I don't think we can. I don't think we can define all the ways that you could possibly be censured. I think that that's an impossible task to do. I think what we. May have better use of our time in in discussion is how we ensure that. The bar is high for how to enact censure so that it's not a tool that's misused and that will help. You know, hopefully persuade people to understand that this isn't, this isn't mean to remove anyone. It's not meant to silence anyone. It's meant to just publicly state that. As a body, we disagree with actions, behaviors, or whatever is being censured. And I I just think that that would be really hard for us to find consensus on what those items would be for censure.
I think you put the items in that lock sheet and. And then we have discussions again. And it has to be a public statement, doesn't it? Yeah, I mean, some have public statements were written, so do we just want to make it a statement? I'm asking.
I'm sorry, I would want it to be public and I want, yeah, like I think you mentioned at the beginning also making sure it's built in. Like how would process comment there is there action.
Does anyone remember? Years ago on the school board, when one of the members was censured? Do you remember that? I I it just occurred to me, I wonder. If it would be valuable to find kind of what authorized that. And or do you know?
It may just work and don't.
I thought we should censure her back.
Well, I'm thinking of the female censure. The female. I really want to name names, but I. This is more recent and. She had gone to a classroom and wrote some things on the chalkboard. Does anybody remember that? And I believe the board censured her. And all I'm, I'm not trying to throw stones. I'm wondering. How did they do that with one authority? I wonder if that would be helpful and informative for us because we only did a search on other cities and towns. And I'll do that if it's helpful, I'll send it on. Except for what I'm hearing you say, it was on a chalkboard. Was it in their meeting or was it outside the meeting? Now I can't. It was in a school.
I I I find it to be totally inappropriate for staff to be pushing this forward because this feels like it's driven by staff. And so I I find that to be.
Nothing to do with staff, just trying to be helpful with examples to help the conversation.
I I think. Staff to be trying to influence. Please do not, please do not give us examples or. You cannot be doing that. This is our decision as legislators.
He gave you lots of examples of, I don't know, six or seven different towns and cities in order to help you with this conversation. I was just.
Because it would be helpful to you if we shut up, right?
So. So, counselor, let's, let's, we're not going to attack staff. It's not going to happen. And it's actually.
That's part of what, that is the whole essence of this censure issue. Is that we are not going to attack staff. We are not going to question staff. You know that I watched a congressional hearing about the Department of Homeland Security in which. Congress questioned staff. Excessively. That is what our job is.
There was also an, there was also a congressional hearing where somebody insulted the folks that were testifying and they lost their opportunity to continue to speak.
It is not our, it is not staff's job. Tell us what legislation to make.
Counselor Springsteen, they they didn't, and it's not accurate for you to make that accusation.
Well, I'm saying, please don't give us any more examples. We are smart enough to figure this out on our own.
That's fine, I won't. If you don't, if the majority does. One person to speak. I might like more examples. Maybe nobody else does, but it helps me.
Well, there are plenty of places to get it other than staff who want us silenced.
That is not true. I won't accept that. That's not true. There's nothing true about that statement, so I won't accept it for the record. So.
I I accept it for the record.
If you'd like us to do more work, we will. If you don't, fine, we won't. It's up to you.
I don't.
Okay, thank you for that vote.
I will just say that I found the examples here to be tremendously helpful. Some of them feel like way overreaching compared to what we're actually trying to go for. Some of them felt a little bit more like guidance and it's helpful to know it's out there. And I think given that we're in a time when. Freedom of speech is is really true. And I guess it probably always has been to a certain extent. That's why it's the first one.
Actually, the Constitution, yeah.
That's what I just said. But thank you so much for repeating my excellent point, Counselor Springsteen. And so for me, having some more localized attention, especially. Where then we can see like, okay, this went well, or this wasn't actually in the public space. It was in their personal life and they then can wrestle with what we think of that. I just, I recognize that for me, having a collection of examples does not necessarily persuade me towards any of them, but instead gives me a more holistic picture of. How and where censure is actually used globally and more closely relevant political points to Lakewood, and that is very helpful for me to consider how a policy like this might impact.
So maybe getting those examples from a variety of. Information sources would be.
I'm sorry, you don't have the floor, Counselor McRae.
Well, I don't have any idea. Well, I don't have any idea who has the floor right now.
Well, the person who was talking and then.
Well, I'm talking, so I have the floor, I guess. Wonderful.
Uh, Counselor Stewart and Counselor Franks.
Yeah, I tend to defer to the chair for who has the floor. So that's, that's what I do. I just want to echo that I really appreciate.
Yeah, because the chair always differs to you.
So you do want to see.
I would like just more examples. We're trying to craft a policy that is going to ensure that we are protecting people's right to freedom of speech, but that we are also maintaining the level of respect and decorum that our positions deserve in this space and respecting our constituents and making sure that we are actually representing them and not just our own interests and the interest of the city and the body. I take that really seriously. So.
Thank you.
Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I'll keep mine short. I do want to make sure the staff is aware that, um, I do appreciate all of the data points. It oftentimes they lead me to other research. Um, and I also appreciate my community. They reach out and share articles and information. So I think we are better as counselors when we get a whole host of information. I appreciate it all. I am certainly able to sift through and discern, uh, you know, all the information and do additional research when I've got questions. Really appreciate the city attorney's office for always being there to, when I've got a question, maybe it's something I'm not very familiar with. Um, so I just want staff to, to be aware that I do appreciate the information, but I augment it through a lot of other sources. Thanks.
That was useful.
Hudson, you know, where was another, so we have these six and this was probably just a quick, quick kind of look. Where could we get more, kind of more information that goes beyond? Is it CML listserv? Is it NLC?
The, the listserv, I think Jay did that search.
Yeah, this, these documents, you know, Ben was more successful than the success I had on the listserv. And I did hear from some city clerks that gave us the same opinion that Allison mentioned that, you know, it's a parliamentary tool that could be used whether you've defined it or you have not defined it. We can continue to look for examples.
It's just a tough issue.
Yeah.
So we can keep looking if you want. That's why I got, you know, we had example locally on a different kind of board. I, I don't know if it'll be helpful or not.
What would be, yeah, go ahead. I guess, I guess I really like to hear from, I mean, what, what? Outside of, I think there's been some agreement on the larger stuff, but what else do we need to move it forward or not?
That's kind of where I was going. What, what more does staff need from, from us? I think we, I think we also agree too that it has to be public.
Yes. So I, I have listed that super majority, the non-removable, the public statement, um, and then a process for doing that, right?
Oh, about whether it's legal under the charter and whether we need a vote of the people.
Yeah. I often have, during this conversation, I wrote down a violation of the code of conduct. But because the code of conduct is aspirational, maybe that is irrelevant. So I had written a super majority, non-removable action, so it's not addressing removal. The protected classes, maintaining free speech, code of conduct violation and making sure it's a public statement. Those are really apples to apples are kind of all over.
Could a council's censure statement be like basically taking all that into account, saying this is what? Like a, a statement of censure of like, this is everything that was just said in that could be utilized to move forward with the process and then of course the super majority. So that kind of encompasses, you can't, can't be based off of this. It needs to protect free speech. Uh, have standard super majority and here's the process to move forward to make that happen. And that's basically a statement of censure. If in fact those are brought forward, council discusses it, there's a super majority.
That you can't repeatedly mute members of council. How about that?
Again, United States Supreme Court in their most recent ruling has said that, that every governmental body has the right to censure. There is no, there is no requirement that there be a policy of any kind. It just says that this has been allowed since colonial times and it continues to be allowed because it is a, it is a majority. And it didn't require a super majority, it just said it was a majority.
You know what? So was slavery. Slavery was too.
It was their first amendment right to make a statement of their own position on something. And that's a really broad, uh, so, so when you are sitting here talking about putting together a policy and putting all these guardrails on it, what you're doing is really restricting the authority that you, that you have.
Well, and I'm not sure if you can answer that. So because they've said that and it's not their policies and procedure. And let's just say that did come. There was a motion based a sensor with that. Will that have to be allowed? And at this point, it would just be a simple majority?
I believe the United States Supreme Court has said that it can be a motion to censure and that there's no requirement to be a super majority. The United States Supreme Court has also been very clear that a censure is not a removal. A censure does not deny somebody their rights. So the individual who was complaining, uh, before the United States Supreme Court about having this censure, he continued to be loud and disruptive throughout the, uh, it was a community college. He continued to be loud and disruptive. So the censure didn't change his behavior in any way. And I think that was the point the United States Supreme Court was making is a censure probably is not going to change the behavior of the person being censured. It gives the people censuring the right to publicly state, this behavior bothered me. I didn't feel this rose to the level of the standards of our body. Anyway, that's, that's the best legal I can give you on this. It's, it's a pretty broad war for you to make some decisions as a body.
It gives the right to discriminate against people of color and women.
Counselor Springsteen, Counselor Sherezadeh's the floor.
So. Yeah, I never have the floor. Yeah.
I wonder.
Cause I'm Latina, right?
I wonder, given that information, is it possible then, instead of us backing into like a whole fledge policy? We understand that this is already something that exists. Could we just then articulate the limitations? Like we know that we're reinforcing this isn't a removal from office and it is not silencing you. And it is a super majority. Well, we created that extra endeavor in that process as opposed to us trying to continue. Given what we know from the Supreme Court, this already exists. We have the ability to do this.
Do you think in Iran, they put those guardrails on, on wearing the, the, the veil? I mean, are there, is there a way to put guardrails on the discrimination about that in Iran?
So Counsel, Counselor Springsteen, you are completely out of line making a personal attack directly towards somebody's nationality.
That's not a personal attack. I'm asking a role question about democracy.
I'm going to stop this meeting if you don't stop.
Okay, stop the meeting. This meeting is stupid.
Okay. I think we have our way forward and that's what we're going to do.
Counselor Sherezadeh said, let's make it broad and we can just have.
I would concur.
What's that?
I would concur. I think that's a good way.
You'd also said in, as a public state, and this needs to be done publicly. You had all said that, so might we add that to it?
Yes, definitely.
And do you want to make a.
They censure women for speaking in that country, just like we do on this council.
So did we want to keep it a super majority? The question I had when I was speaking was, do we want to make it a super majority or just keep it as a majority?
I feel like it's.
I want.
How about unanimous?
I make a motion to stop this madness and put this aside. This is a waste of time.
Well, I think we've come up to an agreement, as I understand it, to move things forward. So we're.
Oh, we want to, we want the ACLU here. Okay.
We're at a place for the Supreme Court and what we've come up to as a super majority or super majority.
I think rather than doing a definition of everything.
Yep.
It's, it's those things of basis of race, age, and that, it's super.
Do those end? Can you say those again?
Yeah, it's just our standard. City law does not discriminate on the basis of race, age, national, color, creed.
Except it does. Except it does. That's what this meeting is about. Discriminating on the basis of those things you just said.
Counselor Springsteen, you'll have the opportunity to file censure charges if this passes against whoever you feel is doing that to you. Okay? So this will give you a voice to bring forth to the body, the opportunity to.
No, you know what? I have big boy pants because I got elected to office and I don't, I don't need to pull that kind of thing. I need to, to go forth with the business of this city, not waste time this way.
Okay. So I think we have a pretty good idea of how, and then we can figure out the schedules going forward.
So to summarize, I, we won't go forward with any more examples of other organizations. Okay.
No, thank you. No, thank you.
All right. Well, I think that'll be a discussion.
Zoe, Zoe, go Zoe, ACLU, Montana.
So with that, um, I don't know, so, yeah. Uh, just a quick reminder though, if you haven't responded to, uh, the mission to pick yourself, you're going to need to know. Call this to an end. That's 73P. Thank you.